It's Paige sent it on Tuesday at 3:53. It says, yes, you will.
All right. Welcome, everybody, to our July 7th, 2022 Special Counsel Meeting. Starting at 3:00 PM, roll call. Here.
Here.
All right, everybody can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item A, action item, compensation consideration. The City Treasurer will provide information on recent compensation changes in neighboring municipalities for discussion of possible changes for City of Eagle staff.
Welcome to the budget workshop. So, in our area, just about every municipality has made a choice and an action to raise wages and salaries for their staff right now, effective right now, because of the way the market is. And it's so hard to get employees and it's hard to retain them. So, I've spoken with several people and some of our neighboring cities, which you have to remember are just as easy to commute to as we are, have done instant raises of 5.9%, some over 8. One city has done 10. Our sewer district has done 4. And they have made all of those effective immediately. I would like to suggest that we consider doing an increase for the last three months, so, starting now, or last week, of 6% to be competitive and in the market and to offer the same kind of a fair wage as our neighbors are doing for their staff. The budget that we're sitting in right now is, can easily support that. We've had so many open positions throughout the year. People have not made applications and we've not filled and we've just been grinding our way through. The new budget that we'll be proposing can also sustain that. So, it's not a matter of what the heck do we do the first of October, we'll be fine. And then, in addition to the new budget, we'd probably propose something like maybe an additional dollar an hour consideration or another percentage as well. We're in the middle, as you know, of a compensation and classification study. So, we'll have a new schedule and a new, all the positions will be equitably measured against the market outside and each other inside. And then we'll have a nice new scale where we can, you know, comfortably put people. So, the scale wouldn't move. The existing scale that we have would not move by this suggestion. It would just be something that we do for our staff right now, to bring them up, to retain them and keep them. We have such a good group of people, they're just all so good. And, so, I would hope you would consider a 6% increase to be effective. You know, our pay periods are every two weeks. So, it would be easiest if it were effective at the beginning of a pay period, which would either be, sorry, June 26th, which would be the period that we're living in right now, or July 10th, which would be the beginning of a new pay period.
First question. Kelly, can you be more elaborate on the $1 kind of raise? How would that factor in on the 6%? So, why don't you just like put 6.2% increase or?
Well, when you are talking about a wage of $50,000 a year versus $30,000 a year, 6% is substantially more for someone who makes 50 as opposed to someone who makes 30. So, if you do that dollar, if you do that dollar increase, it, you know, crunches that percentage to be just a little bit more equal. You know, obviously not exactly equal, but, I mean, a dollar an hour is a big boon for somebody who's making 16 or 17 dollars an hour.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there was not some factor in there that didn't compensate for that because when we're looking at the wages and the benefit side.
Of course.
The benefit side, how would that be affected too for the budget with an increase on the cost of insurance, for example?
Right. Insurance-wise, it wouldn't make any difference on like medical, dental, or anything like that. It would make a difference on workman's comp because that's all based on wage. We fortunately don't have a lot of departments that have that higher rating. We don't, you know, we don't have a lot of dangerous professions. We don't pay theirs. But, we, it would affect the workman's comp. Of course, it will affect the FICA and Medicare and the Percy retirement that we have. But it won't affect any of those other taxes or benefits, you know, insurance-wise.
Okay, my last question for, first, on the, speaking of the benefit side of it, so these other cities that have asked for different from anything from 5 to 10% increases, is anybody collaborating their insurance efforts to co-pay?
Like a cooperative?
Cooperative, that's what I'm looking for, the cooperative agreements for the insurance things, or do we have to be independent?
I haven't heard the cities talk about that for a long time. The counties do that. I don't know if all the counties do, probably the chief might be able to address that. I know the counties participate in something called the GEM Plan and it's backed by Blue Cross. I don't understand 100% how it works. The cities talked about that a long time ago, kind of like we all have eye cramp for our liability insurance sort of situation. But there hasn't been talk about that for a long time.
Okay. So, a couple of things. One is, you know, the discrepancy between some 12%, some 4% is because everybody's wages didn't have their people up to a good spot either, right? There's some cities that went to 12% because they were paying their employees so much lower, they had to bring it up to get to something. And when we looked at this, we just thought that 6% was a good number that would have fit where we are, where our employees are, what it costs to live in Eagle, you know, people traveling back and forth from other places. And, and then the dollar thing, NAPA is doing a two and two where they're giving 2% raise to everybody, but then a $2 also. So, what it does is it balances it out because if you're making $100,000 a year, $2 isn't a ton, but 2% is a lot. And once again, if you're making $15 an hour, 2% is very little, but $2 is a lot. So, it kind of even those things out. So, what we're talking about is maybe, I don't know if it would be this year, the dollar, but we've got to also think about what we're going to do next year too, when we actually start the budget process. This is just to finish out this year.
Right.
And we also had, one of our funds that we put aside was an emergency fund that, two years ago, when COVID first hit, we had almost, I think it was like 450,000?
More.
Right about there, but, that we put aside for emergencies, not knowing what would happen with COVID. We saved it this year, took the COVID out of it, but just said, hey, if there was anything that came up because of the climate we were in, we could use it. But we can even, I think, from looking at the budget, cover this without even going into that. But if we wanted to justify it, we could do it through that also, so.
Yes.
You know, we've got employees that are, you know, being touted, they want them to go work other places and they're throwing things at them. And I think the one thing about benefits, I don't know if you'd ever see the cities do it because it's one of the things that make the cities different competitively, right? Like Boise, they, they fund their own insurance, so, right? That's what makes them be able to do certain things. Us at a certain size do certain things. CUNY can do different, STAR can do different. And so, it's, you know, I, I don't even think STAR is even part of Percy at this point.
They didn't used to be, but I believe they are now.
They just started it, okay. But they weren't as of a year ago. So, you know, that, they couldn't offer that to their employees. So, there are things that we want to try to do to be a little different than other cities also.
And if I may also, and I apologize if I forgot to mention this, the dollar would be, if we, if we did move forward with that in the new year, did the 6% now, did the dollar in the new year, that would be on a merit base. That would be a review from their department head, you know, in conjunction with, visiting with the mayor. And, you know, maybe it's a goal-setting dollar, maybe, maybe it's a doggone it, they've done it, they get their dollar on October 1st. But, you know, it would be more of a, as opposed to across the board, like the 6%, it would be more of a, you know, a department head decision based on, on performance. And also, I apologize again, I keep forgetting things. So, the Social Security Administration did the 5.9% at the beginning of the year. So, that was, I think, where everybody else took their 5.9 or 6% from was because that started in January. They increased that then. So, that was kind of a, a goal. The state of Idaho right now has, from May to this May, I think it's 8.3%, 8.5% increase that they base their things on with the state labor. So, but I'm happy to look into anything additionally information-wise that you need or supporting documents. You just have a really good group of people.
Any questions, Charlie? Did you have any questions on? Okay. So, would you guys like to move to approve that, or would you like to get more information, or?
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item, action item 4A, compensation consideration with an effective date of 6/26/2022 in the rate of a 6% increase effective on that date.
All right. There's a motion, is there a second?
There's a second.
Second. Any more discussion? All of us in favor, oh, roll call.
Aye.
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 I do, Melissa did. Thank you, thank you very much. If you have any other questions for me, I'll be here all day. But, next on your agenda is Bill and he has, I think, put together an interpretive dance to discuss his budget with you, so.
So, you're like 32, so you gotta have, do something new?
I forgot, though.
We're gonna move on to item 4B, Planning and Zoning Department, Mr. Bill Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This, this year's planning department budget looks very similar to last year's in that most of the line items have not changed. The only line item that did change is resource materials, I think, increased by $600 so that Daniel Miller can prepare for the AICP exam and that's, there are some necessary documents, study materials that we'll need to purchase. And the personnel, the salary expense has increased due to the, the planning of adding a code enforcement officer position to the, to that, to this portion of the city's budget. Other than that, everything else remains consistent with this current fiscal year. Aside from the dance that I'm about to do, do you have any questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, do you have a question?
Councilmember Pike.
Bill, thanks for that quick one, I want to see the dance, but, on the code enforcement position, is that coming out of your line item budget? Or is that, that funding coming from your additional code enforcement person?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pike, the, the funding can come anywhere. It's currently proposed in the P&amp;Z budget.
Yeah.
We have a development compliance inspector that's funded out of the salaries that come from the general fund to the P&amp;Z department and then paid out. And, and right now, the proposal would be that, that the code enforcement position would be funded out of the general fund, but then filtered through the P&amp;Z department's budget.
Okay, so, it, like the person we just hired would be the same, out of the same funding, basically, same? Is Matt, I want to say?
Uh, Matt, yeah, Matt Rockwell is.
It'd be the same?
Well, all of it's funded from the general fund.
Right.
Uh, it would just be administered by the P&amp;Z department.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any questions for Bill with Planning and Zoning?
No.
On the budget? No, okay.
Thank you.
Yep. All right.
Kelly.
I missed your dance, I'm sorry.
Next, we'll go on to 4C, which is our Building Department, and Mr. Steve Nash.
John, we lost our screen up there.
Mr. Mayor, council members. I had the opportunity a couple of days ago to talk to Councilmember Russell and we were talking about how it would make it a little bit more interesting during a budget presentation and an interpretive dance by Bill would have been pretty good. So, I'm gonna go over a few numbers for the Building Department in comparison to last year and I promise it won't take very long. One of the things that I gotta do is I have to predict kind of what we're gonna do in permit submittals for the next fiscal year. And at this particular time, going by primarily how we have actually done this year for new residential, new home permits, I am predicting that we will issue 350. Now, that's a significant reduction to this year based off of a couple of things and I did put that on my cover letter. The pricing of lots, development, is a key consideration. The economy as well, material pricing for the builders. However, I did hear that it might be coming down a little bit in certain areas, but it's still at top-dollar pricing. The interest rate continues to climb and I did a little research on that to see what it's gonna look like by the end of the year. And it sounds like it possibly could jump five more times before the end of the fiscal, or, end of the calendar year. And we're talking about a quarter percent jump each time, so. And, one of the things that I do consider is what we call the production builders, the ones that have a few floor plans, they come in and they drop off eight to 10 homes at one time. Primarily, they control the whole subdivision. As it is right now, we don't really have those in the city anymore. So, I had to calculate that in and factor it as far as within the 350 homes. So, what does that mean? That means, revenue-wise, just for building permits, I've got it down as 875,000. I calculate 30%. This is the second year that I would calculate commercial in this. And, based off a budget year, I look at our revenue currently and how much of that is commercial work and right now, it's about 30%. So, I have a $260,000 number for them, which brings it to 1,135,000 for building permitting. We throw the plan review percentages in as well, along with energy standards and then the electrical, plumbing and mechanical trade permits. So, all that tallied up, I have $2,227,750 for the revenue. I'll calculate it up. That's revenue, do I have any questions on that one? Okay, expenditures, of course, personnel, that will be based primarily on the discussion that you guys had with Kelly. But, the other portion of it, what it takes for me to run the department. It's primarily the same as last year. I did make a few adjustments due to having a little bit lower numbers in, in permitting. We have a backup plans examining contract with, with Remy, which is also our mechanical inspector. I budget a few dollars just in case we have a overrun of building permits and I use him as a backup so we can get these plans out in a sufficient amount of time. Because we are running a little bit of a lower number, I reduced the budget for him, $10,000. Under a norm, I would budget 15, I'm gonna budget 5 for this fiscal year. Because as of this fiscal year so far, we haven't used him at all, so. But I do want to have that just in case. Construction world is very unpredictable, so we could, don't want us to get complacent with a slowdown and then get surprised by a boom. So, I do want to keep some in there just in case. The training area, I tried to do my best to actually keep it the same as last year or reduce it. I did up the training because I think that is very important. I didn't up it very much, just $100, but I also reduced the travel portion of it. Some of our training does require some travel, but because of the reduction in costs where I want to actually cut, I'm gonna try to make it to where that, our training is local through the whole fiscal year. That way, we won't have to worry about the travel and per diem. But also, that's under recertifications and I do have two staff members that plan on taking their certifications in the next fiscal year. So, I did keep $2,000 into that one, just to cover that. And anything else that could come up as far as training. Everything else is roughly the same as last year. My budget for expenditure is going to be 46% of the revenue I have predicted. So, it looks like if everything goes to what I have predicted, we would definitely have enough money to support the Building Department and whatever after that. So, with that being said, I stand for any questions.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Vaughn.
Steve, when you, when you break this down, I mean, I know pretty much you're using primarily just new builds. However, have you ever broken down, when you do electrical permitting, plumbing permitting, new builds versus existing? Just to kind of get an idea that basically after, at such time that we can no longer build and we live off building permits anymore, what's the, what's the, what percentage of this estimated revenue is associated with existing structures as opposed to new structures?
Primary, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Vaughn, with existing structures, I don't actually add those in as part of my revenue.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up? So, none of the, so, electrical permitting, plumbing, none of those, none of those are, so, that is in addition too?
Because I don't predict existing structures, it's hard to tell or predict what's gonna happen in the existing. Basically, we're falling into retrofits. It was like with commercial, because I didn't use to bring in commercial as part of the revenue, it was kind of an added bonus to it. It wasn't until last year I started that. I very well could start that. And, it's hard to break it down on what is actually retrofit and what was new commercial. But, the breakdown for the trades that I have now, which I believe is 200,000 in the revenue, is based off of how many homes we're gonna do, based off an average square footage of the home. And because our contractors take 60% of the revenue, that's how I broke it down to get the numbers. The retrofits, because I don't know what's gonna happen through the fiscal year, I didn't put those in the value. But I, I could find a way.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Uh, no, actually, not necessarily, this, that was more for informational, just to kind of what's in there. No, for revenue, I wouldn't, because there's no way that you can ever, estimated builds, we can, we can estimate based on trend, but retrofits, there's no way. But it would be interesting, and this may be offline or something like that, is last fiscal year, if we can get maybe just a rough estimate of the percentage of total revenue came from retrofitting, just to kind of get an idea.
Sir, I can do that.
All right, thanks.
Real quick, Steve, I'll, I ask everybody this, but what is your staffing level right now? Are you fully staffed?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pike, yes, I am fully staffed right now. We did recently lose a member. And it falls in line with what Ms. Kelly said. They had to leave due to acquiring a higher wage. However, we are in, going under a little bit of a slowdown right now, so, the loss of her doesn't really make me understaffed. I just have, I have one still under some training and one that has some good training. So, I think from here on out, until we build back up, it's gonna go ahead, it's gonna work out the way I have it right now. It's a five-member team, six members, including myself. So, the balance, I think we're really equally balanced in the area, is that what I have?
Mr. Mayor, further, so, the, the other, the other contract comes into play when you get, exceed the number that you guys can handle, basically?
Exactly right.
workload, okay.
Exactly right. We call it my just-in-case fund.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions?
No. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, now we'll move on to item 4D, the Water Department. Mr. Ken Acuff.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Pike.
Mr. Bill, could you, I didn't get, I didn't ask you that question though, but, can I ask him real quick? Are you fully staffed? Are you have, are you fully staffed in your department?
Yes, we are.
Okay, good.
Well, wait, forgive me, we have a position available for, in this, this current fiscal year budget for a plan or two. We advertised a position earlier in the year and there was literally no applicants. We have been managing the workload without that position, but it's still, that position is still in the budget.
It's still budgeted for that position?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Forgot to ask him.
All right, Mr. Acuff.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Water Department, I assume you've all read the cover letter and have had a chance to look at the numbers. I'm gonna just quickly go through the notes, unless you have a specific question. Our revenues are up this year. We did not put in budgetary factors for Spring Valley and Avamore because those are not, revenue sources are not cost to us yet. So, everything here is on this side of the hill. Our STLs and hookup fees are similar to last year. Our billing revenues are up with new customers. We have some increase in our telecommunications, SCADA, because we're gonna have new sites to fund there and we're working to make existing sites smart. We've put back in the same amount for tools and equipment that we did last year. The equipment is ongoing every year, the Casail software and so forth. STL projects, this year, we, fiscal '21, we contracted to build a 16-inch trunk line at Old Horseshoe Bend. A portion of that is complete now, but because of, of supply line, or supply chain issues, they're sitting, waiting for some other parts. So, that may, may or may not be done by the time we switch into next year's fiscal year. So, we've carried forward 280,000 into next year in case that doesn't finish this season. Our master plan is, uh, not complete yet, I believe, are we on the last year of that, Kelly? I believe we are, we put 40,000 a year into that and I think this is our last season for that one. Capital construction projects, we have, our biggest one outside of Horseshoe Bend is a section of line that we negotiated with Suez from Eagle Water that's north of Floating Feather. That's a 12-inch line that, that we intend to get, but it's gonna cost us cutting their service off and attaching it to our service. Our service is a lot higher pressure, so we're gonna have to put in a pressure-reducing station as well. So, we're allowing 150,000 in this budget to do that, including the engineering and, and other details that are gonna be needed. Vehicle replacement, we've moved out of our, dedicated funds, we've moved 60,000 to buy two new Ford Ranger trucks this coming season. two new Ford Ranger trucks this coming season. Any questions you got? Specific?
A generic question.
Councilman Pike, go ahead.
Thank you. Ken, yeah, are you, is your staff fully, are you fully staffed?
Yes, we are. We have, we've added an operator this season, so we have three Class II operators, including myself, and I believe the officer's fully staffed as well.
Okay, thanks.
Councilman Vaughn?
Mr. Mayor, so to, one, first one, there's a couple expenditures, and I'm pretty sure is you have multiple where there's equipment. One is just equipment by itself, and then the other one is, I think, tools and equipment. So anyway, I guess, so we're not looking at the same thing, usually a budget, I'll give you the exact one. And then maintenance equipment, I'll put that on a different one, but you have, do, 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 equipment on page three, and then, oh, dozen, no, maintenance equipment, copiers, and there's another one that was on here too. How do you guys differentiate between equipment versus equipment versus equipment?
Okay.
That's...
I need to know what it is.
Equipment and supplies.
Which is...
That's what I do right now, is admins flies.
Once your biggest point in your capital was, the other one is like chainsaw.
Right. Vaughn, the, the first item there is for tools and equipment that like our service truck outfitting, hand tools, adding a service body and things like that for a truck.
Is that the 26-00? Is that 26-00? The tools, equipment, and supplies?
The other one is capital. Such as well repairs, replacing valves, another PRV that we hope to make it smart.
So I got 26-00. So if you go to the, the budget notes, it shows in those what the different ones are? Well, that's the other one, I was gonna say, okay, where's your budget notes?
Page, right after the front page.
Oh, the front one, okay, I got it. I don't see anything on there.
He says he attached budget notes to it, to the right.
Yep. Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Follow up, and then, relative to, I guess these are kind of maybe, relative to the master plan that you guys are doing, you said this is, what year is this, and you're $40,000 per year, relative to the master plan?
We're in the second year, so there's two more years.
So...
Informed.
So three years total, or four years total?
Four year total.
No, just two, so the task order was for two years.
Can you do it in the mic, sorry?
Sorry, I'm so sorry. The task order was for two years, and it's going to scoach into October. We had troubles with some of the mapping, so we moved a little bit of money forward to take care of it in case that mapping isn't done by September 30. So there will still be some of that professional work on it, like, just in the first of the year, and then the master plan will be ready to go to DEQ and whatever all those steps are after that.
So this is just a master plan, so total $80,000 for the master plan?
Yes.
This one maps out our entire water system? Does it do a master plan, does this do a long-term, like, infrastructure plan, capital and maintenance plan with it, or is this just for DEQs, this is what we're looking at in the long term for connections and?
I believe it does all those things.
All of the, so it does give us a long-term capital expenditure, maintenance expenditure, all that fun stuff?
Right.
Okay.
When to turn right and when to turn left?
No, I was just wondering to see if it was just more of a infrastructure only, or if we're actually talking infrastructure, shops, equipment, all that fun stuff to budget out, that's not included?
I don't, I don't think, I don't, I don't think above-ground infrastructure is included, just the below-ground, right?
It, it's talked about, but is it specified as to where it's going? No. I mean, even our old master plan laid out a plan for a future water shop, but it's a future water shop, it's not specified yet. So I expect the same thing from this one.
Okay, so this one, this one potentially include, Mr. Mayor, so would this one include potential connections to Spring Valley and basically the, legitimately the full build-out of the water system, or is this just, are we talking a five-year plan, what's estimated?
I, I think that Spring Valley has their own master plan, if I'm not mistaken. So, are we going to, is it gonna be discussed in the master plan? Yes. Is it gonna spend a lot of time on it? I doubt, because it's just gonna refer to their master plan.
So, Mr. Mayor, I guess this would be, wouldn't it all be considered our system though? Aren't they connecting to the Eagle system?
Correct, but it, but they reference and work together.
Okay.
So Spring Valley has put their own together. Obviously, we just now have an agreement with Avamore to service that area.
Correct.
Whether they come in or not. So, but the master plan that was already started did not have all that in it, because all those things weren't part of coming together at the time.
Okay, so that's, that's one timeframe. So at some point though, we will have a single master plan with all of the water systems in it, we will not have three, at this point, three separate master plans.
Correct.
Initially, and for this fiscal year for certain, Spring Valley is a standalone, and so it's not going to be connected to our other system.
For a while.
Just like the east and the west are standalone, they're separate.
And Avamore is the same way too. Avamore will probably be five to seven years out before it connects to our system also.
Correct, but at some point, they will be connected, and that, that's so.
When we complete the western reservoir, expect that's about the time we will make the connection between Spring Valley and Beacon Light stretch.
The western system, yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, follow up on that one. So part of that master plan, do we put construction standards within that master plan for a lot of the, we'll say, holding, I don't know, basins, but the tanks, pipes, all that, do we put construction standards in with that as well?
There wasn't a specific construction plan, in fact, we're working on one now, although Mike Davis and our office has been reviewing those, and so they're being done to our standards. So do we have it laid out in a, in a standard? Not yet, of course, we're working on that.
Okay, last one, so 83-00, mapping professional services. So, we have another 25, it looks like you guys have never done any, paid for it. I know Meg has been doing a lot of it, is there any way to, I mean, that one would be for you guys in particular, you guys have a massive system, and the amount of mapping that needs to be done, would that be, do you guys have any intent to potentially contract that out? That's, yeah, the GIS component of that, your, your guys' system is huge.
In the past, a lot of that mapping's been done by HECO, and now I expect it all to be done in-house.
Okay.
And, and so we will share costs with IT for Megan's time to do that.
Okay, does that put in the budget, that's what I was trying to see, is where you guys put that in the budget?
It's not put in the wages.
It's not, okay.
Our wages are not split.
Okay, thanks. Got it, thanks.
Okay. One quick question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ken, real quick too, you just alluded to the pressure zones, how many pressure zones are we gonna have to connect with, with the other water now, with the Suez or Viola, whoever they are now? Is there, is there, I mean, because if we have a higher pressure, we have the reduction zone, but is there any other connections that we see in the foreseeable future that's gonna have to require the same to make all the pressures compatible?
Yes, I'm sure there will be, because we're getting closer to the foothills.
Right, so you're gonna need that.
One of the, the situations we have with that North Eagle Road is we have adequate pressure there to get us just beyond Beacon Light, but developments beyond Beacon Light will have to boost again, so that'll add another pressure zone.
And how many tanks do you foresee adding to it in the future for capacity?
Well, I think there'll just be one more from Beacon Light to the foothill, in my guesstimation, and, you know, right now we've got two pressure zones on the east side and three on the west.
And those are all million gallon, that's a million gallon tank, or what's your?
They're all, they're all reduction essentially from what our pumping pressure is.
Okay, and that's in the weeds a little bit, but just for future needs, I mean, it kind of just, the more the public hears our explanation, the better, I think, so. Just the, the need, what we can do, make connections with other water companies and what the, like you just said, the difference in pressure zones, it's gonna be cost factor to make sure they connect right, so we're not blowing out lines and stuff like that, so. I was curious of that.
And I'm sure it would be a big issue on all of the foothill stuff, because there's a lot of pressure zones there, which is one reason why, well, if we, if and when we do connect with the foothills, there'll be another pressure-reducing setup where the connection is, obviously, because they're, they're gonna be continually higher, considerably higher at the higher altitude.
All right, my last question on that then is, will they all be gravity-fed off the hills, or will they be pumped up with pressure zones to?
We're not planning on any pumping up.
Okay, it's all gonna be gravity-fed then?
Although, once that connection is made, we will have a two-way system, so that it can go either way, just in case it needs to.
Yep.
But primarily, it's always gonna come from the top down.
Yeah, all gravity-fed versus, okay, thanks.
Okay, the only other thing that I would suggest in your telecommunication fund is maybe look at, next year there might be a, a big expense to the water system for connecting everything for, to our fiber network, so that we can get away from the monthly charges from all the others and go to something, because right now you're paying pretty much wireless to connect to everything. And so, we might wanna boost that a little bit up next year, but then it would then fall off in the years to follow. So I just, that's one thing I, you might wanna just look at doing, and maybe talk with either Eric or Devante to see what kind of cost that might entail from the water systems, but it'd be better if we can get all those, those pump houses and stuff connected to the, and the SCADAs to the fiber network, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, excellent. Next is the Eagle Police Department, Chief Wilkie. I'll be right back.
If I need to, uh...
Yes.
No, I can do it. I may need to reference a couple slides up here, can I do that?
I spoil one for you, and yes, you can, but I am not, I can put a P D, that's a special...
Cool. I may not use these, but I just need access to them. Documents. I'm sorry, that's actually, it's a...
Correct.
Okay. Okay. You're in the, in the corner right now, you know, corner man's dealing with you, get a little water in you. If we're good, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for the record, Chief Wilkie with the Eagle Police Department, just want to acknowledge I also have Sergeant Justin Elliott with the Eagle Police Department, and Ada County Personnel with the financial area, with Nolan Personal, or Presnel, sorry, and Ricardo Ortiz Miller. I know our time's limited, so I'm gonna jump right in. Historically, the contract with Ada County Sheriff's Office has established, the Eagle Police Department with a high level of service, that continues today. The level of service has come to be expected from our citizens, service that only includes physically answering calls in a timely manner, but triaging emergency calls, investigating suspicious circumstances, following up on quality-of-life issues, and ultimately investing time into creating long-term solutions and by solving problems. We take our citizens' perspective seriously, from the smallest neighborly concerns to investigating mental health issues or long-term investigations regarding domestic violence, drug issues, you name it, we'll go the extra mile to accomplish our mission, which remains the same, to make Eagle a safer place to live, work, and play. Public safety is an investment, it's an expensive investment, but it pays out tenfold to have safe parks where kids can play, ride bikes and be kids, safe neighborhoods where we can live and raise our families, and communities, and I'm sorry, and commutes, that we can travel in relative peace of mind knowing that we'll arrive safe. Our town is growing. Mayor and council, you've done an excellent job in allowing this contract to grow as well. To stand pat now with the continuous growth and not acknowledge a need for additional safety would be derelict and out of character for all of us who care for our community. And that's why today I asked for the addition of two patrol deputies to our ranks, in addition to our current staffing, with no staff reductions. That proposal's been submitted to you. This would also include potential code enforcement rebranding, some of those officers in those positions being transferred to a community service officer, this would require no additional cost, but just to kind of elaborate on that, these positions would be repurposed and directed towards service interaction with our public, while still enforcing some Eagle City ordinances, issuing warnings for parking violations, responding to cold calls for service, potentially collecting evidence, and processing basic crime scenes in patrol, or for patrol, and detectives when needed. This would also free up our patrol resources off of non-emergency details. When available, they'd also make themselves available when they're on a traffic control situation, we could clear up a deputy for a priority call. Also, crime scene preservation, and also to include cattle wrangling, which we spent three and a half hours wrangling a cow steer off of Highway 44 near Linder yesterday, ultimately ended up in the Seguaro area. Being fiscally minded, I understand negative connotations with any bottom-line increases, but these positions are already on the books, it would require simple just job description to revamp, which could be done relatively seamlessly. In addition of the two, the two deputies would give us the ability to keep our response times within the same range as in prior years. With our city expanding in the north currently, it's taking us longer to respond to calls of service, and we're very aware of the citizens in that area. In fact, as we're sitting here today, the call for service on a quality-of-life issue that came in for some of the construction issues and dust and dirt in the area that we will have to look into, those calls are expanding as the valley, or I'm sorry, as the city expands in that area. My fear is that without additional staffing to the already patrolling deputies in those areas, our citizens are gonna begin to feel that this department is no longer able to service them at the level we once were. We have added, you guys have done a great job in adding additional deputies in the past. Our current special enforcement team is up and running, they have been for several months, and as you've seen, it's been covered on the news, they're doing a great job on the Green Belt and the bike part, in the bike park, to the extent of Paul, Officer Paul Lim, who is out on the Green Belt frequently as part of the special enforcement team, came across two situations in this past week in the bike park where medical assistance was needed, and these citizens were unable to describe where they were, they were incapable of having the ability to call for help, and it would have required an additional component, a citizen, someone coming across them to be found. Well, Paul found them both times, was able to get medical attention to them in a timely manner, to include GPS-ing his location to emergency responders that were able to get these people medically treated. We've had a number of calls for those particular units, and why I'm identifying them is those were two additions that we've made. I don't wanna make additions that aren't going to pay dividends to our city, I understand the fiscal impact. We're able to put together two... We're able to put together two scenarios for a, a budget concern, or, uh, I'm sorry, for, um, for budgets in general. The two deputy, I think, is a necessity for the growth of this city. They would augment patrol and I think in a long-term plan, we would be looking to obviously, uh, stay within our, stay within our, I don't want to reference the, the comprehensive plan, but stay within what our, our citizens demand of our, of our deputies. Um, and that's a high level of service in a timely manner. We provide that now. But as we move forward with essentially the same quality of citizen, the same concerned citizen, I, I am fearful that if we don't get out in front of, uh, some of the increases, that that will lead us to a place where we aren't adequately serving our community. One thing that, um, I'm extremely proudful, prideful of, uh, is the quality of service that each and one, each and every one of our deputies are able to provide in a timely manner. Whether it being, uh, Detective Cherie Tucker, the unquantifiable, uh, and I'll, I'll elaborate on that, but the stuff that's not quantifiable, where a detective takes the time to follow up on a case and is able to off the record, which means that there's just no call documenting this, but they're able to take the time to meet with victims. They're able to take the time to explain resources that are needed. We do that on a daily basis and those are things that when we start getting inundated and overwhelmed with work, we're unable to do those, those quality of life follow-ups and those things that matter to our, uh, to our citizens. As we move forward, traffic is a, is a concern, obviously. Um, I, I will just, last scenario I'll put out there. On Wednesday, we're looking for, this past Wednesday, we were looking for ways to, uh, obviously keep our community safe and, uh, collaborative efforts with our neighboring cities. We were able to, um, have Meridian and Boise police into our city. It was also, uh, released in a, a press release, uh, to do traffic enforcement on our highways and roadways to include floating feather, feather, which I know, uh, having, having traveled it several times, uh, personally, professionally. Uh, with all the traffic concerns and cutarounds now, it's, it's in a, uh, a bad state in the sense of there is a lot of volume on that road. And we were able to make, uh, and unfortunately didn't bring all the numbers here, um, but I, you want, you want to elaborate on that real quick? Do you mind? Justin Elliott, actually Sergeant Justin Elliott put together this operation and I'll, I'll preface his input real quick by saying, on that day, we were able to complete, uh, a whole operation and we had zero traffic collisions in the city of Eagle. I attribute that to people being able to see police out and about in a heavy manner to be able to slow down and take their attention back to the road and driving. And that is an anomaly as far as Eagle is concerned lately. Again, it's a transient community in the sense of not our, obviously not our citizens, but we have thoroughfares here that we have one that has an estimated seventy-five thousand cars that go through it on a daily basis. So that's a big plus for us to be able to figure out creative ways to have our neighboring cities help us out and showing some enforcement. But if Sergeant Elliott could provide just some quick numbers on that, I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely. Uh, Mayor, council members, uh, we brought, um, I think fifteen or so, um, step officers into the area. As part of a collaborative effort, we've, uh, we've agreed to help them out also, um, as part of the, as part of the one hundred deadliest days campaign. We went to Napa earlier in, um, in June and Deputy Seibert and Kinnelberger went over there. It's really, a really good time to team build and, uh, and educate and do some enforcement. We did, um, I believe sixty-five or sixty-seven traffic stops that day on the twenty and ninth of June. I think we issued about fourteen citations. So a lot of it was education. Uh, we did do some commercial vehicle inspections and we have a lot of complaints with some, uh, some noise and air brakes. So we brought a commercial vehicle unit in to do some inspections and we wrote some seatbelt violations as well. So, um, all in all, we had no traffic, traffic collisions during that time, which on a day, on a day shift on Wednesday is pretty big. It was, um, personally just having doing, having done a lot of the traffic stops that day. I noticed it was really hard to turn around a vehicles just because of the amount of traffic that was coming through because of Fourth of July weekend. We got a lot of comments about people saying that we saw a lot of cops out that day, what's going on? Um, so we were definitely visible and I think we definitely made a great impression on the citizens and the, uh, people driving through Eagle.
Thank you. Um, the reason I wanted to mention that too is we're also cognit, cognizant of having to, we've got to be fiscally responsible and also, provide the level of service for our, our community as, as it grows, because obviously we are not the only city that's growing. The whole valley is growing. So, uh, with that and just to dovetail off of that, um, we did have, uh, a, we had a train up for our motor unit. We are fully staffed in our motor unit now with Deputy Kinnelberger and, uh, Deputy Seibert, who are now becoming, uh, essentially with Jeremy, um, one of the lead instructors or will be one of the lead instructors for the Ada County Sheriff's Office as far as, uh, training future motor officers throughout the valley. So that's an asset that we, that we have here at the city that, uh, will pay us dividends in the future as well. With that, um, I stand for any questions?
Any questions?
So Chief, uh, first one, uh, less shared service credit. Um, quick explanation what that is and then, uh, then I'll have a question about the, the two scenarios.
Absolutely. Um, the shared service credit, and I'm going to let Nolan, uh, comment on this as well, but I'll put it in my terms, pretty layman terms. Shared service credit is, we understand that through the Ada County Sheriff's Office, we're going to have situations where our deputies are going to respond to, uh, unincorporated areas of Eagle, of unincorporated areas of Meridian, uh, and neighboring, uh, areas to include perhaps a, a Code Three mutual aid, uh, uh, response in unincorporated Boise. Uh, and what, we know that that may pull an Eagle deputy, uh, for a time being out of the, out of the city. So with that being acknowledged, the county has come up with, with this formula to basically assess that, how many times it comes and give a credit to the city to say, hey, we understand that on occasion, an Eagle deputy may have to go out and triage a, uh, for example, in Avamoor right now. If we're out in Avamoor to help on a, a priority call, we have to be there to triage, um, and on occasion, maybe help out in an investigation. As soon as we can get back to, uh, our city, we'll bring them back. But understanding that, that may be something that, um, that happens, the county's built in this shared service credit, uh, built in as a, is basically an acknowledgement of, of those services being pulled out of the city.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I follow up on that one. So is it fairly consistent, each one of the cities gets roughly the same percentage rate? The only reason I say that is Eagle, unlike the rest of the cities, has three major, uh, interstates, in which case, I don't think you could really do a direct comparison with any of the other cities, the amount of, we'll say, non-city related, um, even though it's in the city, but it's also associated with a state highway. Um, has that ever been taken into consideration, um, to basically increase this to offset the amount that we, we, well, you guys deal with that? This may be one of these guys.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Vaughn, um, yes, it's been considered. Uh, however, I don't think it has been acknowledged recently, uh, at any time that I, I can recall in the last, uh, uh, couple of years. I know, I know exactly what you're, what you're saying. It's, uh, basically we view the corridors that, that you're talking about sixteen, forty-four, fifty-five, and twenty-twenty-one, um, obviously all border our city. And our citizens are on them and we, we are on them as well. Um, and, uh, fiscally speaking, I, I, I concur. I think it's something that needs to be, uh, looked at, but we have a responsibility to our citizens and Ada County residents, let alone Eagle citizens that are on those thoroughfares to make sure that, uh, that, that we are on scene and taking care of business, uh, and most of the time investigating those. Probably needs to be addressed in the future.
And we, we've had multiple conversations about how ISP and the state steps up to, you know, start patrolling those better and everything else and not rely on the back of, uh, the Ada County Sheriff's Office and the Eagle Police Department. So there have been those discussions and what we can try to come up with to make that happen. So just so you know.
I'm in on that too. Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, they, they don't have the staffing ability ISP either for adequate servicing like California High Patrol did, say, on their state, state highways. So that, that's a limitation for the whole state that they need to look into as well. That's out of our scope of ability to improve, but.
Mr. Mayor, I guess the only thing I'm looking at is from not necessarily us, and I completely agree with you guys, a level of service should stay, but relative to if it's an equal percentage that all the cities are getting relative to this, as opposed to the, let's say this, even though there are citizens, the relative number of people that are from different municipalities that are using that area and affecting that number, we're probably a minority, um, let alone that we're still basically paying for that. So theoretically, there should be an easy way through a transportation planning. And so we say, hey, on these, Eagle provides only about thirty percent of the actual use, seventy percent is that. I would think that maybe Ada County could come up with a way to offset that a little bit better and relative to Eagle as opposed to, it shouldn't be, in my mind, I guess it wouldn't be the same as Meridian and us, wouldn't be the same relative to that because Meridian really doesn't have, they got.
So it wouldn't come from Meridian, neither be CUNA or STAR? Because they're not, no one's getting any credit services.
In Meridian, because they have their own, because they have their own police department. Correct. So that's kind of, that's where I was going on that one, is a disproportionate share.
Yeah, Councilman Vaughn, or Mayor Pierce, Councilman Vaughn, um, you're definitely on to something. So we do get a bigger tax cred, or I'm sorry, tax, uh, shared credits, um, property taxes, I'm in. A, we get a bigger in the city of Eagle, shared services credit than STAR, than, uh, CUNA. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but it, it is based and calculated and perhaps if, if I'm wrong, Nolan, you could elaborate on that?
Yeah. So currently the shared services credit is a seven percent credit on the total cost of the contract. So by dollar value, uh, Eagle gets the largest credit because they're the largest contract.
Right. So it's, but is it seven percent for the other cities also? Yeah, okay. So that, that's, and that's, I think, what?
So that's what I was talking about disproportionate share of number of road miles per city frontage, if you will, seven percent, seven percent. As opposed to maybe ten percent, seven percent, seven percent, just. So just wanted to bring that up, thanks.
And I, I would like to also say too, just for yours, I don't know if we could go with the second scenario of the two officers for Avamoor because we don't know what will happen with Avamoor. Um, and if we budget, there's no reason for us to budget for it at this time. If we brought, if we did decide to annex Avamoor, those funds would come in and then we'd be able to negotiate what would happen with that. I mean, just so you kind of know upfront on that side.
Quite honestly, I, Mr. Mayor and, and City Council, I, I appreciate that too. Um, it is my job to forecast, uh, basically potential in, uh, let alone customer service, but response times and whatever else. Given the fact that we have substantial growth in the north as well to include the Beacon Light corridor, if you will. Those numbers, the two, the two deputies, I mean, I can show you a matrix right now and we just don't have enough coverage. Outside of Avamoor, I would lobby for these two deputies and then be out in front of Avamoor if that was even to happen. Of course, I didn't mention Avamoor because they weren't even honestly a consideration with these, with these two.
Cover letter. So your cover letter says a second scenario is for the annexation of the Avamoor community. So I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, no, you're right. I didn't.
We're talking apples to apples, so.
Well, absolutely.
Can I interject? A real quick question with that, sorry Chief, but this is a pertinent time for me to understand and the council and the mayor too, what, what is your full staffing level? Are you fully staffed at this point?
We're fully staffed, yes.
Okay, so what's your deficiency for the North County though, as far as the city of Eagle?
Well, currently we have shifts like on patrol, for example. Um, and, uh, I, I do have a matrix. We, we have two day shift cars, we have two swing cars, and we have two graveyard cars. That's for twenty-four hours of, of coverage, um, to include one sergeant. Uh, we also have a traffic unit that's, works a day shift and then the addition of the, uh, special enforcement team guys that are on the green belt. So you have a total of, uh, of seven to possibly eight that are on the road for twenty-four hours. There is some overlap obviously built into that, but what we're seeing is, um, for example, on the cattle call, uh, there was another call that, that came out and we were about a thirty-five minute delay because we didn't have resources to, uh, augment that. Traditionally, we do still, this is, this is where the, the entire county is, is being affected. So North County, which we've, North County Patrol, essentially their patrol resources mirror us and are traditionally less. Right now they have five deputies for twenty-four hours. That includes from Bogus Basin to Canada. So the ability to tap into those resources is becoming a little bit, a lot less reliable. Last week, we had a, a case where those quality of life issues come up where people are trespassing at a pool, for example. Our guys are, we have a deputy off, um, which I encourage, our deputies have to take time off. We are trying to get, uh, overtime in, can't because people are, uh, obviously dealing with whatever. And long story short, uh, we get complaints right away that our response times are thirty, there's thirty-five, forty minutes, there's, and I'm not basing any of this stuff off of next door. I'm basing this off of face-to-face. I go out and talk to HOAs, I go out and talk to, um, our people. We're just not able to, when we have one event going on, to respond to those quality of life issues and, and we have a demand of our, of our citizens that are, uh, essentially saying, hey, we want to be recognized too, uh, we want our problem solved. And they don't, and I, I hate paraphrasing, I hate piling them up into one group, but typically people are, they want their service when they can have it. I understand that people's perception is reality when it comes to those calls. We're having to really prioritize our response to, uh, quality of life, uh, calls. And I, I mean those with all due respect. Trespassing, that's, uh, not somebody in your house or, or actively on your property. Trespassing within a, an HOA community or, or et cetera. We're having to really, um, take more time than ever before to get to those. So these are forecasts and, you know, I'd be derelict in my duties if I don't try to forecast the need, uh, for our community. And yes, and the, and you were absolutely right and I, I apologize for alluding to not referring to that. I absolutely did say that this is in addition to, um, this is based on the two deputies for the, uh, potential annexation of Avamoor. But as you dig into the numbers, we're showing growth in areas. We know the growth is there and the complaints are going nowhere. And, uh, bottom line is, we do have to respond to, uh, crash at forty-four and fifty-five. And that ties up resources for potentially hours. Um, that fatal crash that came down off of fifty-five and Councilman Vaughn, you're, you're dead on. Those weren't necessarily Eagle residents, but it affects all of our Eagle, Eagle residents when they're in that traffic area for hours on end because we're obviously having to triage and, and handle those cases. We're just trying to get out in front of the inevitable, which is response times going up, complaints going up and, um, adequate responses to community-oriented policing where we want to be in those neighborhoods. We want to be, uh, accessible for our, our community and forecasting those out for traffic issues. I mean, Mayor, you, you know, we, we talk all the time and I'm open to council talking with me anytime, concerns in the, in the, uh, in the city. We see the, the, uh, people with soliciting for, uh, whatever it is, money and whatever on corners. We want to get out and contact them. Do we? Yes. But we're getting to a point where we can't actively do that as readily easy as we were even two years ago. So I respect the decision the council and the mayor will make. But in my opinion, based on forecasting and, and everything else, I, I just believe that we would be, um, behind the eight ball even more if we, we didn't bring on two additional.
Mr. Mayor, can I interject now? Chief, I'm, I'm advocating for your two officers and I did this last time before Sheriff Clifford, um, asked for one additional officer. And I made that same statement, we don't want to get our public behind the eight ball. And it was based on knowledge of professional services needed in, in the public safety realm. I do think we're deficient. You said we're fully staffed right now. I look at the national average as one officer per thousand capita residence. And that's somewhat of an old term sometimes, but it's still relevant today that, that the citizens of Eagle are anticipating a certain level of service brought in to protect them and their community. As governing body, our responsibility is to provide safety of the community first. That's our number one national objective of any governing body is to provide safety for their public. Secondly, is that I do think we are at twenty-five or twenty-eight officers, uh, in your full department right now.
Councilman Pike, we are at twenty-eight total, myself included.
And what's the population for our city right now?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-four thousand, according to our numbers last year.
Thirty what?
The new compass numbers, thirty-four.
Okay, thirty-four thousand. So we're six deputies short in my book as to what the needs are. So we're not too deficient. We're actually. the needs are. So we're not too deficient, we're actually six deficient. So if we piecemeal the two at a time, excluding Avamore because of the call of need for service, I think we're, 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 we're ab, we're compelled to make the argument to take, make sure we have public safety at the forefront of everything we do in, in our decision-making. So I would look at it from the needs are, and, and let's just face it, Eagle is an affluent community. We're not, we're not looking for uh deficiency i- in, in revenue coming in. We are a, a very wealthy community, and I think we can sustain through our general fund two additional officers to make sure the quality of life and the, the public safety needs are, are just up to the, the norm of the national need and not worry about what other communities are doing. I want to focus on, we're elected to make good decisions for the, the protection and the safety of our community. So I would think two officers are well within the means of us not only financially, but ethically and morally of, of able to provide the service. And then we'll bring in the Avamores and, and the Spring Valleys as time goes on with future budgets for tho- those needs, and they will compensate with those impact fees also uh adjusting into those uh budgets as time comes. But I'm looking at today's citizens of how many people we have within our city, and what are the deficiencies that we need. And I'm not comfortable with twenty-eight, when we should have thirty-four. And I said that last time as well, that we need to strive for that one per thousand capita, just because other communities can't afford it. I believe Eagle citizens deserve it and can't afford it. So that's where I'm standing, that support advocating for the two officers.
So I, I just want to say two things. One is um, our comprehensive plan says point seven-five per thousand. We need to change our comprehensive plan. That's something that our residents have decided to give input on and do, and so on and so forth. So.
I, I agree with that.
And I, and I have heard you over the last couple of years. My point, just to make clear, is the reason I brought up the other two officers is because in the letter from the chief, that the public saw, I read last week, everything else, says that it is for the annexation of Avamore. And I want to make sure it's clear that that is not, if you have, if you want to tell us that you need it differently, but that's not what was given to us. So I just want to make sure that that is, you know, your presentation was different than what the part that the public will see and look at. So that's just why I wanted to bring it up, is if it's something that's needed outside of Avamore, I totally understand. Um, but that's not the way it was given to us in, in the formal document. So I just, that's why I wanted to bring it up, to make sure it's clear that people aren't assuming that we are automatically annexing Avamore if we give you two more officers. So that's some of the, the stuff I think needs to be just said, so.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Vaughn?
Um, just want to, I guess, bring up another one is the, you know, I want to, I totally support this. Um, big thing is, then we go back and look at the numbers. Um, this is one thing I think we run into a problem right now, both on the national level and regionally, is we want a lot, um, it costs a lot. So that's the big one right now. We already know this is one of our biggest budget items relative to the taxes that are brought in from the city of Eagle relative to this. So if we're going to go up those six, where does that, well, you said Eagle is influential, okay? Eagles, but Eagle also has one of the lowest taxing rates in the state of Idaho, which means that's, I mean, we, we can't, you can't do, this is a permanent charge. So impact fees will only go for so long.
Right.
These will only, so basically what you're saying is.
Public safety in the, in a ping pong ball between funding.
Oh, I absolutely agree, but that's what we're talking, the level of service has to be funded. Therefore, what we, I mean, really what it's going to look at then is we have to look at funding sources. Um, short-term funding sources, um permits, uh, those are not. This has to be, this is a permanent solution, requires a permanent, and that would be basically increased taxes. So I'm just, I mean, we have to look at those. I just want to make sure that we're putting that out, that if, if we want that level of service, we're going to have to pay for it. So just making sure that, we talk about that.
But it's paramount, and I do agree with that, but it's paramount, I do think the chief, you need to interact, interject, if you will, that, I know you're, you're trying to be, I, I don't know what the right, the right word is, but I, I've seen it professionally. So that's what I'm saying, is we, you have to look at it from, if you get behind the eight ball, you will never catch up. And that's the deficiencies I've seen time and time again with counties or city of policing and fire and EMS. You cannot catch up. So we're always going to be, and all of a sudden, like you said, the, the, the response times are, are delayed, the public's confidence in their leadership is delayed. So it doesn't really reflect on the chief, it comes reflecting back on the mayor and the council as to how we're providing safety for our community, because that's our number one responsibility. So if we have to reallocate funding to offset, to make sure that the safety of the per, is paramount, so be it, especially when it's in a general fund, if we have the ability to allocate funding through that general fund bag into the resources where we deem as voting body necessary. So that, that's where I want to make sure that we know. We're not, we're not, we, we have the ability to be flexible with, with that bag of money in the, in the general fund, and we can allocate where we see it needs to go.
Correct.
Yeah. So it's just a matter of opinion as to where, what, what services you want to be staffed a hundred percent, and what services you can say can be at eighty percent. In my book, a hundred percent, public safety has to be a hundred percent staffed all the time. Everybody else will have to jockey for position and validate their needs. That's just my opinion on it, but it's a professional opinion based on experience, not on desire or whims or theo- theoretical things. But I would like the chief to elaborate just a little bit further on that number with, if you don't mind, I don't want to put you on the spot, but.
No.
I, 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 I really firmly feel we're not adequately being served to the level we need when it comes to not only the code-three calls, but the, the assistance calls. And I'm very interested in this community service officer position, because that takes away the ability for the officer to get out there and provide emergency service needs to the public, and they can do the secondary code-two, or even code-one calls to, for reports and, and, and cordoning off a road, chasing cattle, I mean, things of that nature. I mean, I really want the focus to be in law enforcement, law enforcement, and everybody else can kind of have a secondary seat, if you will. And that's just my opinion on it.
Well, um, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Pike, thank you. I, I appreciate everyone's opinion, and everybody is, is spot on. I, I really, I really want to say that, and that's a lot to unpack right there. But I'll, I'll start with, um, the one per one thousand, if you, if you look for, that is an archaic, I've been in this job for nineteen years, and traditionally, that number was good back in the, in the two thousands, when I started. Um, it has not what a national average is anymore, it's actually in the mid-twos. Now, do, do cities, are they able to fund that? No. They're, they're not. But it, it is a level and a quality of service that I get texts from multiple citizens in our, in our community. And they ask me about traffic issues at our schools, they ask me about traffic issues. That is a main concern. If I was, if you asked me right now, what, what is Eagle's number one, the citizen's number one complaint um about safety in general, I would say traffic, as I get asked about it every day. Um, I take texts uh from everybody, take phone calls, and I would love to put people in the places they need to be, but we have to prioritize our, our, our service. I told you guys who, the, what the matrix looks like for what our resources are that are available, to include the sheriff's office as well as a force multiplier, if you will. Um, it is, we are one, one call away from being completely tied up. And we don't get to, we are fortunate that some of the things that we do behind the scenes work uh in the sense of being in our communities and talking to our HOAs. Um, I've talked to uh the mayor about this, I've talked to uh Councilman Pike about this, but having a liaison, having uh neighborhood watch, having, we try to put the emphasis back on, I have a lot of ideas about volunteers, about putting emphasis back on being neighborly, about the uh taking those calls for service away from our deputies coming and solving problems, but putting them back into the community where we can have a volunteer of sorts bring those complaints forward when they're justified. I don't know how many complaints I've had on floating feather in Ballentine, uh, people blowing through that stop sign. We know it, but we can't be there all the time. And it's, it, it pains me to say, you know, I have one traffic guy that's, that's available right now, and he's got to be at X, Y, and Z, while he's also got to write the, the two crashes that he had. And, and I try to, as best we can, I equate it to metaphorically, there's a bunch of holes, and we have, I'm, I'm old school, silly putty, remember silly putty? And we're trying to spread our stuff to cover those holes. And sometimes it just gets stretched too thin, and we can't do it. Um, moving forward, I, again, I'd be derelict if I'm not trying to think of ways, given what I can control. I can only control what I can control in the sense of I have this allotment of, of deputies. We've thought of ways out of the box to put them in positions to get out in front of those calls, i.e. our special enforcement team. Um, establishing our traffic, and I can't take full credit for that, that, that goes back to another chief and, and me as a sergeant along for the ride. Um, and now we've been able to expand that, listening to the community, knowing what those uh, what those needs are, listening to the community and responding to the community, and uh, you know, being in places when we're asleep that they're at. Um, yeah, we've taken, we've taken detectives out of, out of detective uh uh normal shifts and put them out in the community um to try to get out in front of. So we're constantly thinking about ways that we can be places with the allotment of officers that we have. It's uh, but I'm telling you uh from my experience, and I hate to even say it, unfortunately, Councilman Pike is on to something. And if you look at some of the other, I don't like comparing, because it is, it can be apples to oranges, but some of the other municipalities have overstaffed their police departments from the, from the onset. I won't name any names, but off record, I'll, I'll, I can talk about this. Um, it's caught up already. There are still places that are understaffed, and um they can't catch up. And uh there are places that, quite honestly, the Ada County Sheriff's Office patrols that have been under alleged annexation for, for thirty years, and they haven't been able to take place, because it is extremely hard to get caught up. Um, in my experience is, in, especially here, we have an agency that cares, we spend time in our calls, we spend time making sure that we come up with long-term solutions to put out fires, for lack of better, to put out problems, to stop the problems from occurring. We're getting to a point now where our citizens are getting upset because we are unable to do that, because we're having it clear. We're having to, to not pass the buck, but maybe not do the job that we could uh when the community was twenty thousand, just a few years ago. Um, and that's the stuff that keeps me up at night. Um, and I, I fully understand that we do have these thoroughfares through here, um, and I'll get to that last point with the, the CSSs. Um, and we have these thoroughfares through here that I've worked in Ada County for nine plus to ten years almost. Um, and it's amazing to me that the state does not have a larger presence on, on those thoroughfares. That's not for me to comment on, even though I just did. Um, I, I don't, I, I, I can't explain that, but I know that I've, I've literally uh responded to, investigated, supervised fatal accidents on all of our major corridors. Sixteen, fifty-five, twenty-twenty-one, uh, forty-four. And uh it's something that unfortunately is in our backyard, uh and runs through the, the center of our city, and, and we have to stay on top of, because the second that we don't stay on top of forty-four, we have had, I can go back in time and I won't waste any more uh time, flashing yellows, where we had, we've had fadals at forty-four in Park, we've had forty-four in Edgewood, places where people are trying to uh, you know, enjoy our city and our, our, you know, our dining establishments, our, our convenience stores, and have made a turn, and it's been the last turn they ever made. Um, we, we're the ones that are out there uh on the front of that and being the first ones to respond. And then it subsequently ties up our units, and then we, we move our pieces on the board as best we can. Um, the CSS, the community service uh officer or community service specialist is a concept that um we've kicked around and kind of have morphed some of our code enforcement guys into the past. And what it, what it actually establishes is basically a second tier, not a second responder, but someone who can respond in a safe manner to an area where we have a traffic collision on, on Edgewood and forty-four, and we have a, a deputy who's there just fricking minding cones, unfortunately. And we have other calls that need to be handled, and we can free up that deputy to go back in service and subsequently take those, those calls uh by having that person respond there now. Um, it's, it's also a, a job that, that can take reports at a low level, um, it can take uh evidence. Um, we've kicked the tires on it for a while. Um, it's something that I, I would like us to, to get out in front of, because what it does is what we've set up, what I have tried to set up our police department to do, and that's free up our, our resources patrol-wise, to be proactive, to be in our communities, to be out in front of the creepers that are in your neighborhoods, that are, are looking to find your garage door open, that are going to come in. Um, that's where I need patrol at, that's where we need them at, and that's what we've tried to set us up for as best as possible. Unfortunately, again, we're one call away from all those resources being compromised, spoken for, and hence why we um, why we're here. And again, I, I want to actually go on record and apologize for uh that cover letter, Mayor, in just saying that these, these positions, that was uh something I should not, I should have elaborated on that. But I, I did, in fact, put that, of course, in there, that these are just related to the annexation of uh, of Avamore. I think it's a bigger picture, and unfortunately, I get where you're coming from. Um, and that, that is my error, so I, I wear that. But um as we're sitting here talking on record, I think that we are at a point where that community will come online, those communities will come online in our, our northwest sector of our, of our uh town, and I think that um, once those are online and those traffic issues come out and, and start affecting that sixteen corridor, subsequently that Lender, Lender corridor, um, that we're going to, we're going to be behind the eight ball, and not be able to provide those, those necessary services uh that our, our community demands and expects.
Any other questions?
No?
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. That is the end of the presentations for today. We're going to go on to item five, executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Mayor. Vaughn? Yeah, pursuant to code seventy-four dash two zero six, um, like to go into executive session associated with actions regarding pending or threatening litigation.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call?
Aye.
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 All right, we're out of executive session. Is there any motions? Seeing none. Item six, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.